All right, we are live and rolling. The floor is yours.
All right, thanks again, Highland. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, January 18th, 6 o'clock, and we have a full quorum. And we are now called to order. We'll start with a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Do we have any planning commissioner announcements? See none. Moving on to public comment period, this is the time for you to make comments on things which are not on the agenda. Or if you would like to comment on something that is on the agenda later, but you can't stay for, you may do so now. Highland, do we have anybody in the queue for public comment?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Well, that's just sad. All right, thanks. So moving on to presentations. We have none under this section, although we'll have something later. So we'll go to the consent calendar. We have the approval of minutes from Planning Commission meeting of September 21st and of October 5th. And we have our current and advanced planning and processing list. Does anybody have any comments on any of those items? Yes, Mike?
Yeah, just on the, I don't have a problem with the September minutes, but I wanted to ask a question about October 5th minutes. Regarding 7:15 of our Cudaro Dutchman side, I remember we, you know, made a decision on the number of tables. I just wanted to confirm that it was four tables and not three. I just can't. You know, my recollection doesn't go back that far and I couldn't find my notes. But I believe that there were two sets of tables. We, you know, they eliminated one set of tables and, you know, towards the, I'll just say this. The north side, but they kept the tables closer to the restaurant. But I just wanted to confirm that there were three or four tables. That's all I want to know because that's on the minutes. On page 15, it says four tables and I said, is that three or four? So I just asked that question of myself and I thought I'd throw it out to Susan was there.
Yeah.
Bill was there and Joe was there. So that's just, I just want to make sure it's, it's right.
Yeah, that's a good question. Joe, do you remember? Because I know they sort of went down to one table on the northern side of the little divider area. And I remember seeing the three tables and thinking it looked kind of cramped and maybe they would go down to two, but I don't imagine.
And I thought Susan, based upon my recollection, Susan, then maybe Scott can, you know, help us out or, or the staff. I, I thought they went down to three. They got rid of that, the fourth one towards the restaurant side, north side. And then they got rid of the two tables on the south side. So there was only three at the end of the day. That's what I remember. Now, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I just want some clarification before we approve it because once the minutes are approved and it's a done deal.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can't really remember. I would have said three tables at the south end and one table at the north end.
That's my recollection is what it ended up.
That's mine too, Joe.
Yeah.
Have you got anything on that?
I'm, uh, I'm trying to pull up the the approval right now.
Yeah, because just for your benefit, Susan, I did go to the actual agenda packet. Looked at the, you know, the design, looked at how the tables were set up. And I think, you know, that's where I was trying to recall my memory as to what we did, but I believe it was at least three. And then maybe one more, but I just can't, I can't definitively.
It does say limited to no more than four tables.
Okay.
Whether they end up with three total or four total, I think we're still within the numbers from the minutes.
And you know, I guess at the end of the day, Susan, I guess where this comes back to me is the fact that we were talking about public space versus private space. Remember, this will become part of their restaurant, which is more private, even though we're trying to keep it public.
These were meant to be public and not identified as part of the restaurant seating.
But that was that whole discussion. So I wanted to make sure we had it right. So that was just part of that whole discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what prompted me to get some clarification. That's.
I like that you, I like that you, you know, pin it down, get the details right. Wait to see if Scott comes up with anything. While he's looking, anybody have anything else on minutes or on the processing list?
I don't see any condition in here that speaks to the table. The number. I'll, I'll tell you what I will do, though. I'll, I'll just have Cindy go back over the, uh, the tape. And we'll correct it and, and, and match them up, right?
Proof, perfect. That's all we want to do is get it right. That's all.
Yeah, fair point. Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thanks for mentioning that, Mike. I'm pretty sure that you're right on the three tables.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve with Scott's clarification.
All right, and a second. Bill, you want a second? I saw your hand up. All right. And Scott, would you like to call a question?
Uh, sure. Commissioner and Grapia.
Yes.
Commissioner King. Vice Chair Person Roshan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Chairperson Stewart.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
The only thing I would say, Scott, too, is I don't believe Asia was a planning commissioner at the time, so I probably have her abstaining.
So you guys regularly speak to this, but in fact, commissioners that weren't on the commission can actually vote on minutes, even if they weren't on it. A lot of times you choose to, but it's not a requirement.
Okay.
I've meant to bring that up in the past and haven't, so. I mean, if you want to withdraw her vote, though, she can. I.
No, I, I just remember when I became a planning commissioner, I did not want to vote on minutes. I did not participate, you know, a, 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 a meeting I did not participate in because I can't verify my, you know, what I did or what I didn't do and what happened at that meeting. That's the only reason I did it. But I'll let Asia make her. Yeah, that's fine.
Fair point.
Perfect. All right. So moving on. Public hearings, we have none. So we'll go straight to new business. And for those of you who may have missed it, we do have a slightly revised agenda. It was posted on Friday, so plenty of time. We have a new business item C1, a review and discussion of the accessory dwelling units as affordable housing options in Los Angeles County report. Thanks very much to Mr. Roshan, who provided us with this report and I believe has organized some folks to give a presentation for us.
Yeah, thanks, Susan. Lyric Hellcar, is she on the?
Yeah.
Is there?
Yes, I'm trying to let her in now.
Hi there, this is Lyric.
Hi, Lyric.
Hi, Bill. Hi, Commissioner Roshan.
Um, Susan, should I do a quick little introduction to the group?
Yes, that would be great.
So Lyric is our policy director at Inclusive Action for the City. I'm a longtime board member of this group and I was an advisor to this report. And so Lyric and IAC was so generous and offered to give us a presentation on what the report involves. IAC, they're a nonprofit community development financial institution. And have been doing that for way over a decade. And they're, uh, they really focus on low income and how to build strong local economies, especially in, in low income communities. I think that's necessary in almost every community. And this report really does focus on the idea of the auxiliary dwelling unit as the opportunity for affordable housing. Not just because it's low cost, but to construct them, but because it would be a commitment from the landowner with certain incentives, whatever they might be, to encourage and, and accept affordable housing for the unit for at least a period of time. So Lyric, thank you so much for being here. And Susan, if this sounds right, something like a 15-minute presentation.
Sounds perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Lyric.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Roshan, and thank you to the rest of the commissioners for having us. I am wondering if it's, if it's possible for me to be able to share my screen so that I can pull up the presentation.
I think, Scott, can you set that up or?
I think, I think she probably has the ability or are you not able to do it, Lyric?
I only see a mute button on my end, a hand and a mute button.
Uh, maybe Jalen can help us out with that?
Yeah, this is Highland with AGP. I could promote Lyric to a panelist and then she would be able to share her screen.
That's what we should do. Thank you.
All right, well, I will get her promoted over.
Congratulations, Lyric. You're getting promoted.
Inside of two minutes. That's good.
Hi, everyone. I'm back. Very excited to be here.
Much better.
Yes, much better indeed. Here, let me share my screen really quickly. So we'll start here and first I'd just like to say thank you so much for, for having us and for allowing me to present on this. And also for Commissioner Roshan for bringing us on. He is a fierce advocate for inclusive action here in Los Angeles, and so we're excited to be able to tell you about this work for Morro Bay. So as Commissioner Roshan had mentioned, we had done some research in Los Angeles around ADUs in their development. And before I jump into that, just want to first give you a quick overview of a couple of things that we're going to talk about. This looks like a lot, but I promise I'll get through it really quickly. This is just going to be talking about the research itself, going over the surveys and interviews and the key findings that we had from them. A little bit of a permit analysis from what we, we have in Los Angeles. A couple of programs that we think would resonate with you all here in Morro Bay and then recommendations that we found for Los Angeles, but also might fit for Morro Bay as well. So first, a little bit of an overview of the research. Oops, apologies. Um, I'd like to tell you about the methodology. So we had five major components of the research that we did. The first was an advisory board, which consisted of different folks across the spectrum in terms of ADU developments. This was financiers, manufacturers, tenants' rights advocates, as well as city planning folks and people who ran their own ADU programs. We conducted a survey that we got responses from 52 homeowners and 33 ADU renters to understand what it was that they were experiencing, either to develop the ADUs themselves or what it was like living in them. Third, we did interviews with experts also across the board in terms of spectrum from homeowners themselves, a couple of renters, financiers, manufacturers, and understood what it was about the, the process that we, they found as sticking points in areas that they felt could be improved to make it easier for folks to develop ADUs in Los Angeles. And fourth, we did secondary research, just understanding the landscape of ADU research that has happened historically. There's been a lot of it. And at the same time, it's also fairly new in terms of understanding how it affects, you know, housing stock in different jurisdictions. And then lastly, a permit analysis for the city of Los Angeles as well as unincorporated LA County. For today, for the very little bit of permanent analysis we talked about today, it's going to focus on unincorporated LA County because I think that probably will resonate with you all a little bit more than it would with the city of LA. So as a little bit of context, LA is in need of a gargantuan amount of affordable housing, so 516,000 units. And we're, we're behind, but we're hopeful that ADUs are one tool in this toolbox. Median rent or income in Los Angeles is 46,438, and that's based off of 2019 census data. And then monthly rent is over $2,400 per month for a two-bedroom unit. This is something that we think, or ADUs, we believe are one possible way to help alleviate the affordable housing crisis. You'll find that we, we found some interesting things through our surveys. And just since 2017, we've had over 8,000 permits or 8,000 ADUs permitted alone. And it's probably actually much higher than that because there was a very large uptick in 2000, or sorry, 2020, 2020. Um, we think, and Los Angeles County generally thinks that this as an affordable housing option will be a great way for us to, to move forward, especially with the, the current deregulation that's been happening. And as it's going to continue to be, you know, easier for individuals to be able to, to help and do their part for the affordable housing crisis. And I'm going to go now into some of the surveys and interviews and the key findings that we had. For the survey key findings, we found that homeowners typically are above the median income. Nearly 60% of the, the 52 homeowner respondents earned 14% over the median household income in LA County. So that was a little bit over $100,000 a year. And the, and I will name that median income for homeowners is actually similar in San Luis Obispo County as it is, in LA County as it is in San Luis Obispo County. So the numbers are, are pretty similar. And for ADU rental prices reported, they are lower than typical rental prices across LA County. That being said, they are still higher than what would be considered affordable. It would still end up being more than 30% of renter income in most instances. Navigating the permitting process and obtaining finances were two of the biggest obstacles for any of the homeowners as they were developing the ADUs. And the overall cost to build an ADU by survey respondents was about $100,000, a little bit over. Financial support is the best incentive to rent affordably. And of the different options, this was the one that was, that was chosen by the respondents to say that this would incentivize them to be able to rent it at a lower rate. And there were, there's a slew of different ways that that could be, be done. In terms of the interviews across the board, like I mentioned, we interviewed a number of different folks and we found five major things. The first was that tech, technical assistance for homeowners is a very core need. So when you're, you're basically building another house on your land, right? And homeowners are not developers, and so they need some help in getting through this process and what it means to build another unit on their house. The next is that when you're trying to serve a very specific population with ADU rent, rental. So having maybe like a voucher holder go into the renter or in, be a renter in an ADU, you need to have case management for that particular program because it, you, you end up expecting a lot from a homeowner. And if you expect too much from a homeowner, they're not going to want to participate in a program. So making sure that the case management is there to assist targeted populations, if you're looking to serve targeted populations, is very necessary. The third thing, that a right-sized financial incentive and support for homeowners must be created. Typically, construction loans and other conventional loan products aren't actually meant for ADUs because ADUs are often rented out after they're fully built. But that means you have about a nine-month to a 12-month gap where you're having to pay back your loan, but you're not actually getting any rental income at that time. So you're having to pay those expenses out of pocket. So there needs to be some sort of program or product that actually serves the building of ADUs. The fourth thing that we're finding is that private lending institutions are needed for scaling ADU development. And this is for two major reasons. First is just sheer need. So typically, public, any sort of public money is probably can't cover the need that's required to build ADUs at the scale that, that we would hope that they could be built. And then secondly, if they're going to be developed, if we're going to be developing some sort of ADU product, the private lending institutions are going to be best suited for doing something like that with the help and the push of a public institution. And then lastly, communication among affected agencies is a core component to streamlining processes, especially for the homeowners themselves who are developing the ADUs. They, um, that, like if I lyric was building an ADU in my backyard, I really am going to want to call someone at the city and find out what's going on and why my permit hasn't been approved. And so in order to do that, you need to have both internal streamlined services as well as external streamlined services. And internally, we would recommend something along the lines of like one team member to be the point person for when someone is having their ADU go through. And we'll get to that in just a little bit. So those are the key things that we found from both the survey and the interviews that we conducted through this research. And next, I'll go through a little bit of a permit analysis. This is very, very high level. And just a couple of really key things that stuck out to us when we were looking at the, the different permits. So in unincorporated LA County, it took 128 days for an application to be submitted and then have the permit issued. And then from permit issue to COO, certificate of occupancy, it's another 210 days. So you're looking at a full year from when you apply for an ADU all the way to when it's actually able to be occupied. And something that I think is highly related is that only 17.3% of applications actually made it all the way to certificate of occupancy, which showcases that there's some disconnect between the very beginning, obviously, to the very end, when you have less than one-fifth of the applications actually making it. Now imagine that in unincorporated LA County, instead of having 8,000 units, we had 40,000 units that were available to be rented out because these processes were streamlined and we were able to get the, the attrition rate substantially hi, uh, lower, a lower attrition rate. But, um, those are just a couple of key items that we wanted to highlight to showcase that there's definitely something that has to happen with the city in order to make sure that it's easier for folks to be able to develop the ADUs themselves. So now I'd like to go into a couple of the different programs that were, you know, resonating with us because in, I did do a quick scan of your guys' housing element. And I saw a couple of key things that, that really stuck out to me. And the first was that you're looking to house seniors and workers affordably and ADUs can definitely be an option for that, right? And then the next thing is becoming more tiny home-friendly and ADUs themselves are very, you know, they lend themselves to that type of, of development. And this can really move you towards meeting the RHNA or the RENA goals for Morro Bay and making sure that you're, you're getting to the affordable units. And there's ways to do it that actually incorporate the number of different recommendations that were, number of different key takeaways that we were just discussing, right? The first one that I'd love to, to highlight is the My House, My Home program, and that's actually out of Monterey and Santa Cruz. So Monterey and Santa Cruz partner with Habitat for Humanity. And they have a program where they develop or they build the ADUs. And then the, a senior homeowner is able to rent it out affordably to a Section 8 voucher holder. And they get a loan at a 3% simple, simple interest. In exchange for participating in the program, they have to rent it out affordably until it's paid off. So there is a, it's not a deed restriction necessarily. Instead, it's a restriction on the loan. And so that program, they've developed, I believe, seven affordable units through this particular program. But I think one of the key things is that costs do run high sometimes and it becomes a little bit difficult to be able to develop ADUs at scale without scaled financing. The next program I'd like to highlight is the LA ADU Accelerator. So the LA ADU Accelerator is out of the city of Los Angeles and they are renting ADUs from homeowners who want to rent to low-income seniors. So this is specifically to help with property and case management for folks who have ADUs but don't really want to be the typical landlord that is very involved on a day-to-day basis. And instead lets the city be the property manager and also provide services to the senior who lives in the ADU itself. And then the last one is the Pasadena Second Unit ADU Program. So this is a pilot program that they just launched back in 2020. And they had two options. The first was to build new ADUs with $150,000 in financing at 1% simple interest. But it was expected that this loan would actually be refinanced over the course, or like before three years because they deferred payment for three years, which is really excellent because then you have the ability to build the ADU, collect a little bit of income for about a year, two year and a half, and then refinance the, the ADU development itself. The second option was financing for $75,000. And this was for actually permitting unpermitted ADUs, so bringing up existing ADUs up to code and making sure that, that the folks who live there have everything that they need. And so they would finance through the city of Pasadena, also at 1% simple interest, but it's a much longer term loan of 20 years. And then they also get the added benefit of deferred payment. This was a pilot program, so they've, they've only just begun and they're only in year two at this point. Um, but they did say that the applications were, there were a ton of applications. So there's a very high interest in these particular types of programs. But in, because it's a pilot, they only had the ability to have a couple of them done. So now, given all this information, I'd like to take you to a couple of recommendations that we found were really helpful for the city of LA. And we actually just found out earlier today that it's going to go in front of the LA County Board of Supervisors next week. And we're hopeful that they pass this as a study to, to potentially create a, a set of financial products. But first, there's, there's two, or before I get into it, there's two big buckets. There's the financial products and then there's streamlining of processes. And so for each of them, we have two recommendations. For the financial products, number one is leveraging public funds with, with traditional lenders. And so this means input of public money into a fund with traditional lenders to ensure affordability. But then having the backing of a larger bank to make sure that you could do this at scale. And Pasadena also did actually look into doing this exact thing, but they're still in a piloting phase and not quite at the stage of, of being able to implement it just yet. But this is, this has a really big benefit, as we mentioned a little bit earlier, that you're able to provide funding for a very large amount of homes because you have a private institution. But with public money, you can then require the affordability and do some sort of mechanism to ensure that these units are being rented out at an affordable price and that the product itself is actually serving the, the community that you're looking to serve. And then the second one, which, you know, this leads me to the second point, is developing targeted financial products. And this means that you could have financial products that are dedicated to very specific populations because you probably have residents in Morro Bay who can, who can utilize a conventional loan or a conventional construction loan. And they just want to rent out their unit affordably without having to, to, to utilize any special product or anything like that. And so you could leverage the public money while making sure it's affordable and still have a conventional type loan. And so you're targeting a very specific population with that. And then on the other side, you could have a loan that's dedicated to folks who are lower-income homeowners themselves. And then that loan then might have deferred payments and a lower interest rate. And it's targeted specifically to homeowners who are looking to build ADUs and build wealth for themselves and their family. So next, I'll talk about the streamlining. Next and last, actually, I'll talk about the streamlining of processes. So something that can go a really long way is just demystifying the process. So creating a step-by-step guide, saying who it is that you need to talk to, where are the phone numbers, what are their names? These are the things that you can expect and making it really clear for a homeowner to understand what it is that they need to know before they get into developing an ADU. And then the second thing, which is related, is streamlining internal processes for better communication. For the city of Los Angeles, we recommended an ADU, what we called an ADU concierge, which is really a team of people because at the city, at the city of LA and the county of LA, one person just isn't going to be enough. But in Morro Bay, it might make sense to have a single staff person who is the point for when you're looking to build an ADU. And I lyric, I'm going to build an ADU and I need to know from Morro Bay where it is that my permit is in the process or if there's something holding it up. And so those paired together are really just about demystifying the process and instead not meant to be a really heavy lift on anybody. And that clarifies things for everybody, both internally and externally, and ensures that folks across Morro Bay know that they can get an ADU developed in a pretty easy and streamlined way. And with that, I'm going to, please leave it open for questions and I'll stop sharing.
Thanks, Lyric. That was really terrific. Mike, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll just ask the obvious question. Lyric, you know, obviously the big push towards creating affordable housing in California and all the incentives to do that from the state of California, the governor, so, and so forth, so forth. What kind of? Um, what kind of financial support could moral bay get from a pot of money that's being made available for such programs, if any? So I'm just going to throw that big question out there, right? Because that would impact moral bay's ability to do a lot. Okay, that's a big question. You would probably know that coming from LA.
Yeah, so with the city of LA and the county of LA, they do have their own sources of funding that they utilize from their, from their funding. So the county of Los Angeles does have discretionary money that they are hopefully going to be putting towards a guaranteed loan program, specifically to ensure that they could partner with a private bank and back what are considered more risky quote unquote loans. So that folks have access to this money. So that is one thing is being able to utilize, um, existing funds from something like moral bay. Another thing that comes to mind is actually the, the federal funding that may be coming from the state that San Luis Obispo County probably got or most, you know, did get. And ensuring that there, um, and that some of that money could potentially go towards housing as well, especially under the, um, you could, as long as you're framing it under recovery of COVID, which is a very substantial way to frame this, then I think that you'd be able to access some of that funding as well.
Is that CDBG funding or housing community development funding that you're talking about?
Yeah, you could do, I think you could do act- actually both, I, either CDBG or, or HCD.
Yeah, and just to clarify, Lyric, it's not like moral bay has a lot of money sitting around. And I'll just throw that out there. So we would have to have somewhere we could go to get some support for such a program.
Of course, and, um, the other thing I, I also bear a miss not to mention is the surplus from the state. So the state does have some, I think it's like $46 billion in surplus. And absolutely, uh, moral bay does not have the type of money that Los Angeles, either the city or the county has. But even a little bit to guarantee a couple of loans is good because then you can say, hey, this is just in case you're not going to get payment for a couple of loans. Chances are they're going to get payment. There, we, so one thing that we didn't talk about is inclusive action does actually run loan programs specifically for folks who are considered risky. And we have, I believe, a 98% payback rate. And we've only ever had one loan default in the history of the organization. And it's because folks want to pay back their loans. They want to pay back the money that, that, um, they have borrowed, right? And so the, the idea around a risky lender is less about the person themselves and more about the, the structures that have deemed them risky for whatever reason.
Great, thanks. Bill, you have your hand up?
Uh, thank you, Susan. Um, Lyric, thank you so much. Really nicely done. Um, you mentioned scaled financing. Could you explain that a little bit for us?
Absolutely. So thank you for that question. And this, you know, this actually points to what Commissioner Rodriguez was saying in terms of being able to meet the need. So you, a lot of the ADU pilot programs are around five to seven to maybe 10 different units and building them. And when you want to talk about building 20, 30, 200 or 2,000, you need the, the financing for something like that. And so scaled financing for that many units, when they cost a hundred thousand dollars a piece, is going to come from a private institution or maybe a, you know, a credit union or a local bank that has the ability to put out those types of loans at a much higher rate than something like a local, you know, like the city, the city of moral bay, for example. Cause you'd only be able to do one or two, whereas the private institutions could actually meet the scale that's required to get to the goals you're get, you're hoping to get to.
One more question, uh, Lyric. So the ability to manage this with the financial issues around affordability, uh, selecting the renter, that sort of thing. How did you guys picture that working in a, or how might it work in moral bay, uh, a city of our size?
Absolutely. So this would be leveraging existing programs that you already have, right? So any programs that you have in terms of placing tenants who might be voucher holders or through systems through San Luis Obispo County, being able to partner with those social service programs to ensure that they have, because they will have, there's no, there's not going to be any lack of folks who are, who are going to be able to, or want to utilize this type of program. Being able to partner with those existing programs is really going to be able to make it easier for both the folks who are developing the ADU as well as the city itself, because these are things you're already familiar with, right? These aren't new. And so you're, you're just being able to, to add another tool in the toolbox.
And, and so to follow through on that, the kind of terms that might be involved with this kind of loan. Um, what are we expecting? Um, for example, let's say moral bay wanted to have this be, um, uh, first, first call for local residents um, as a way to avoid gentrification in, in the city and a way to really support our existing residents in our existing communities. Would that be a term of the loan? How, how does that kind of formula get put in place?
Absolutely. So I think you could make it a term of the loan itself. And you also could say that from the program at, at the onset of the program, saying that we're looking specifically to house folks who live in the city of moral bay. And when you're screening the applicants, you can just straight up, do they live in moral bay or do they not live in moral bay? And so some people will qualify and some people won't, depending on the, the type of, of loan and incentives that have been put on the, the program.
And then the long-term issues, like how, how, uh, you mentioned, you know, the, until the loan is paid back. Um, are there other ways to look at it so you get a more, you know, a long, longer longevity around the affordability option?
Yeah, absolutely. So you could look the traditional affordable housing route and do something like a deed restriction where it phases out over time. Um, they have looked, I know that they have looked at that actually in other jurisdictions. And there are some, there, there are some legal questions in case like, say I had an ADU and I had a deed restriction on the house, but then I sold the house and the property, like the land in which the ADU is on. There's questions about how that gets transferred over. Um, but that is absolutely a way that you could, uh, ensure longer term affordability instead of with the existing homeowner.
Great, thanks. And, and if we have further questions for you guys, would you be available?
Oh my gosh, of course I can, I'd be happy to, I, I apologize, I didn't get to in the presentation, but I do have our, um, email address and my phone number. I'm more than happy to email it to all of the, oh, sorry, I live next to the train. Uh, but yeah, I'd be more than happy to email it to all the commissioners so that you, please, by all means, reach out with any questions.
Thank you, Lyric.
Thank you. Um, I see Asia with her hand up.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. That was great. Um, I don't have specific questions. Well, I, I have a lot to say, but not, um, necessar- maybe I can save a lot of it for, if we're going to discuss this afterwards. But, um, I guess my specific question is if you know about the SURF program through the state of California and if they're that program, which will be releasing funding for resilience work in throughout the state, if they are addressing housing at all with that program. I can't, I just don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent question. Um, we're hoping it does address housing, but I'm not sure entirely. I know my colleague Rudy is actually also on this call right now. Rudy, I don't know if you have anything you, you could add to that.
Hey everybody, I hope you could hear me. Oh, you can. That's my face right there. That's a great question. So SURF is, is this new statewide program. Uh, we've been tracking it here locally, um, and, uh, the state is asking for collaborative proposals from various regions. And I know that, uh, at least in LA, we're applying and we, they just finished a process by which the state was asking for feedback on the application. And you should know that at least in LA, we made it clear that we want to make sure that housing is part of, uh, the grant making that they do. So they just completed a process where they were asking for feedback. And so moral bay can provide feedback to Sacramento that, hey, we want SURF to include housing as a priority. I think it would go a long way.
Great. Um, my other question is about when the, these surveys were conducted, was it 2020?
It was 2020, it was like actually 2021. It was at the beginning, it was just about a year ago that it was launched and it was open for about a month.
Cause I'm wondering, um, I know in the work I'm doing, we're seeing construction prices and supply chain issues. So the cost of construction has really doubled in the last year since the pandemic. And I'm wondering how this is affecting ADU building in LA and how this might, um, put a kink in some of the research? Or if you guys are going back to, um, look at that to see if there are additional solutions or how that might impact our thinking on it moving forward.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. There is one program here in LA called United Dwelling. And they actually construct based off of multiple ADUs. And so instead of like prefabricating it or anything like that, they wait until a number of applicants are building ADUs in the same area. And then they build all five, you know, whatever, five to 10 of them together to cut down on the construction and transportation costs. Um, I don't, I can't speak specifically to how it's been affected by the pandemic. I do know however, that they have increased production in the past year and year and a half or so. I will say that their prices have also gone up. And so I, I can't, we are not going to be updating the research to reflect this specific item. But I, I, I can't say for sure that it's affecting the construction prices, but I don't see how it, it couldn't, honestly.
Yeah. Um, and then the other things that I just have comments about that this research aligns directly with, um, research I've done. When I worked at FEMA, FEMA is always trying to rehab houses or harden houses for emergencies, fire, flood. And we did some thorough research on local municipality programs. And they've really aligned with your guys' research, saying one of the biggest ways, of course, to help to encourage homeowners to do things to their homes is financial incentives. But that went even beyond grants or loans and went into things like, um, permit fee waivers, inspection fee waivers, things, uh, tax credits and things on the state or municipal level that even if the city didn't have a bunch of, um, grant or loan funding, they could incentivize in small ways. But I also wanted to highlight your guys' research that, um, I've found as well that programs that clarify the process and hold homeowners' hands is like much that, I know that takes a ton of resources for a community. But where financial incentives don't exist, when a program can hold homeowners' hands to help them become their own developer, even in small ways, like creating lists of contractors, um, that are qualified, um, coming up with small trainings or ways to educate homeowners. Those things also, um, assisted home rehabs or home, um, homeowner-led projects like that. So, um, yeah. And then some other comments I just had was that we do have local organizations, like people self-help housing and different, um, community development organizations that do affordable housing work. And it'd be interesting for the city of moral bay to kind of tap into that network. And, um, I know they use a lot of community development, uh, financing and funds. And I don't know what other maybe revolving loan funds or CDFIs exist in Slow County, but that would be worth, I think, looking into as well to see, um, like you mentioned, what kind of work is already being done. So lots of thoughts.
Could I tag on real quick to Asia's question? Um, Lyric, we did look at property tax, um, you know, forgiveness, um, what was the outcome of that research?
Yeah, so we found out that through LA County, when you build an ADU and if you were to do an assessment, that's a, that's a like, uh, I forget, I apologize, I'm, the name is escaping me, but it's like a taxable event, which means that it actually reassesses the property tax altogether. And so a property tax abatement might not actually do the thing that you want it to do because the property tax will be so much higher with the new.
It's a concurrent, got it.
Right, exactly.
That was one of my questions actually was about, you know, if you're, if you're making an improvement on your property to that degree, you are raising the property taxes. And if you're looking at homeowners with, you know, especially folks who already have, say, a lower income and want to add to their income base by adding an ADU, they're adding a lot of additional expenses through property tax, through maintenance, through insurance, through their loan financing, all of that. Um, and, and before I get into questions, Joe, did you have any questions?
Oh, well, just one, um, you mentioned that only about 20% of the project actually go to. Were you able to characterize what was the, say, the, the biggest explanation for the, the failures or the biggest two reasons? Just curious.
We, no, we did not find out that information because this, from the, the county, we, you know, this was something like 17,000, um, applications that happened and then only about 20% made it all the way through. And so we did not talk to the folks, um, who made it through or who didn't make it through to understand. But it is, that is absolutely an open question that we should look into.
Thanks, Joe. That was actually my next question. So thanks for that answer. Sounds like more to understand there. All right. Any other questions for Lyric or for Rudy? Well, thank you so much for this presentation. A lot of food for thought. I think we'll open it up to see if there's any public comment on this. And then we can have some commissioner discussion about it, see what our next thoughts might be. Um, so Highland, do we have anybody waiting in the queue for public comment?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. We have a raised hand from Inclusive Action.
Ah, okay.
My bad friends, that was, uh, from before.
Okay, I wondered about.
All right. Well, in that case, we have no raised hands in the queue.
All right, we will close public comment then. Um, bringing it back to the commission and definitely, um, Lyric, we would love to have your contact information. Okay.
Is it, what is the best way to get it to you? Should I just email Scott?
Email Scott.
Excellent. I will do that.
Thank you. All right. Any, anybody want to start the discussion here?
Yes, Susan, Susan, I have, uh, this would probably be a good way to start as, uh, you know, we're all part-timers. So let's get the full timer to the plate here. That's would be Scott. And I want Scott to give us his impression since he does this for a living and gets paid very well for it, I hope. And tell us how this all fits in tomorrow day's, you know, plans.
Well, I mean, we're, we're, we're working on, you know, several, I mean, you've heard me say this before. I mean, we have, we have grant funding, um, you know, in the pipeline right now, um, and we're working on, you know, the stock ADU plans that was presented to the commission previously. We are, um, working on, uh, incentives for those, putting together handouts for, um, ADUs. Um, unlike LA County, most of the ADUs that come into the city actually do get built. Uh, that was kind of shocking, that number, uh, that Lyric put out there. I was, I was surprised. Um, but I said, most of the ones that, that come through our process do end up going all the way through, uh, planning and building, um, which is good. Um, I will say recently, um, you know, you have, you know, issues that you expressed, uh, Chair Stewart, that, you know, the cost of construction has gone up quite a bit. And we've had, we have had, um, a couple of, um, projects that had ADUs in them, um, revise their projects when they got the construction estimates, uh, to remove the ADUs. Uh, and to just go through the remodel part that was going to give them the, 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 you know, they expand their master bedroom and give them the extra bathroom in the house, um, type thing, uh, just because construction costs were so much. I mean, that's, you know, that's certainly disappointing on my end when I hear that. And we've had a couple of those over the last six months that have, uh, you know, that have, you know, revised their projects to, because of, uh, the overall cost of construction and, and it going up so much. So that's, that is kind of a, you know, kind of a day outside, um, related to, uh, construction costs currently. So, um, hopefully, you know, it doesn't continue, but, uh, again, we had a, we have had a couple of. Again, we had a, we have had a couple of those that move forward. You know, we uh, we have a couple of different, you know, grants that are ongoing right now and we're, we're looking at developing tiny home. Uh, direction um and policy, uh, again, updating the city's ADU policy and coming out with a handout for that. You know, the next piece of it, uh, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's great and Lyric was, you know, speaking about that. Uh, is the, is the financing piece and like how isn't money out there, is there money that's going to come out of the, you know, the fifteen billion that the state allocated, right? Um, that's allocated through many different, you know, state agencies and um some of that will probably be made available for housing. Um, you know, probably a lot of it will come through HCD is my guess, um, and so. As that funding becomes available, if it, if it, you know, would serve programs like this, then we would certainly go after that money. Uh, I think uh, Christian King, you know, you spoke uh about CDBG funds, um, that wouldn't really be something we'd be able to do. We are part of the county consortium at the moment. Um, and so all of our CDBG money gets funneled through the county, we don't get very much, we get between fifty and seventy thousand dollars a year. You know, I do plan on looking at going out um side the, the county consortium. Um, in, in our next opportunity, which I think is twenty twenty-three. Um, maybe going after, you know, individual, individual uh. Programs um related to CDBG depending on what their focus is in a given year. The consortium was nice because you get a, a specific allocation every year, it's just again, not very much because we, we have a small population and that's what it's based on. I don't know, uh, that I have a whole lot to add beyond that, um, I think, uh, I think I spoke with uh Commissioner Roshan a little bit about. Um, one of the, the, the cities that I know that has kind of a similar program on a scaled-down. Um, version is uh, is the town of Truckee. Um, they have an ADU program, I think they, the maximum and uh funding that they. Allocate towards them is fifty thousand for new ADUs and then they have like a tiered system, it's like fifteen thousand or something for. Uh, you know, to convert uh or permit ADUs that were permitted, that were constructed illegally. And bring them up, I think that's a two-tiered system, that's like seventeen thousand, between seventy-five hundred and seventeen thousand or something along those lines. Um, and the only reason I bring that up is um the, the city manager for Truckee is uh Jennifer Callaway, who's the city's former finance director. So probably get some decent information, you know, from them on what they're doing, I know their program hasn't been around for, for, for too long. Um, they do have a like housing programs manager for the, for the city, which, which we don't have. Uh, you know, from a staff standpoint, but um that was a one, a, a plan that I thought for a city that's kind of similarly. Sized and might be something that, you know, we might be able to pursue at least a little bit um and have good conversations and I could probably get good data out of them. So, that was about the extent of my answer for you, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Okay, thank you.
Do you feel like it would be any um more productive for us to do this in a regional fashion? You know, county-wide versus as a city or does that just complicate things?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't complicate, we already have a, a regional housing group that we meet monthly on. Um, and uh Nancy Hubbard, uh, our part-time planner, she attends those mostly. Um, we got together, I mean, how we ended up getting a hundred eighty thousand dollars to do the um, the stock ADU plans was we got together, you know, we had, was a competitive grant. That we had to go out, we had to go after from the, it, from uh, that was being processed through Slow Cog. Um, and uh, it took all of us to get together and we were all looking at doing these stock ADU plan programs separately and we were going to use REAP or, or LEAP funding and. Um, we all found that, we were doing that, we all started talking and said, okay, let's put our application in together and then we were successful, we, and, and, and getting that money, so. Um, that was an example of us working collaboratively, um, and again, we do meet on housing uh pretty regularly. For, for all jurisdictions, there's typically representatives from, from all of them um at those meetings. Looking at opportunities for housing, we originally, you know, opportunities related to infrastructure, it's usually one of the biggest hurdles. Um, to housing is, is infrastructure and, and how you get that to a site and, and that type of thing, so that was one of the things the, the committee was sort of formed. Um, you know, one of the things that was formed to address. Didn't come up with any sort of, you know, plan out of it at that point, so now it's kind of a touch base to see, keep everybody on the same page with what different communities are doing related to housing.
Yeah, so. Can I ask you a question, Scott, this is Mike again? Um, you just talked about Nancy Hubbard being part of the, you know, the, the county effort or the regional effort to try to support her. A uh, ADU program, do you think it would be a benefit to have one of our commissioners be on that? You know, the reason I asked you to open up, Scott, is because I, I feel like we're right there, we're right where we can be at this time. At this time, that doesn't mean in two months, things aren't going to change and we can change what we're doing, right? I mean, the way things are going now, so I just wanted, I, I thought maybe there might be a benefit in having a planning commissioner, maybe participate if they want to. But I think you're, you're doing what you need to do to keep us informed. So, you know, we could do it that way too, I'm just saying though that I think we're where we need to be at this point in time. But if things change, you'll bring it to us or maybe we can participate, I don't know, that was just an idea.
Fair point, Commissioner Rodriguez, um, that, that committee um was formed at the behest of the city managers group and county CEO.
Yeah.
Um, so uh, they meet, I think, monthly. Um, and uh, you know, certainly housing, one of the biggest issues in the county and. And so they all agreed that they would, you know, they would send personnel, you know, uh, to the, to the meeting and, and so we could. Continue to talk about housing and look at it globally, like how that might happen, so um, that's where that came from. Um, I, I don't imagine there's a desire right now to incorporate that, but it could, it could move to something else in the future. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know, um, beyond that, uh, really what to say about it, but um, that's where it came from and, and. And that you have the city managers and county CEO, um, you know, agreeing to. You know, to, to allocate staff time to these, to this effort, uh, because it's so important.
Yeah, and the only, the reason I ask that too is because obviously Bill was part of this group, you know, that kind of. You know, had some connections with what was going on with AD, so that's how it all starts. So Bill obviously volunteered to do this work at a different time and was able to bring back some resources, some information for us. So that's how it all starts, so that's where that idea came from, so thank you, Bill, for, I just wanted to throw out a shout out to Bill. Thank you for, you know, what you did in the past and continuing to support our program here in the city of Morro Bay, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah. But Bill, I think Mike has just volunteered you to.
I, I don't hear an opportunity just yet, so.
Yes, that's, yeah.
And Bill, did you have a question or had you left your?
No, I do, uh, Scott, like, you know, it's probably important for us to distinguish between ADUs and affordable ADUs. So affordable ADUs is really trying to say, you know, Morro Bay needs this to keep our population in town. You know, our workers and our seniors to stay where they're, you know, stay in Morro Bay. If you were to give us targets, what kind of affordable unit take are we looking at in Morro Bay? How many units are we trying to build a year?
Um, and we, we have our RENA numbers that we're, we're supposed to be hitting, um, and ADUs do count for a portion of those. Um, I think right now we're building about twenty-five ADUs a year, right around there. Um, you know, the number needs to increase if we're going to hit our numbers. Um, I think it probably will, um, they are, they do make up, again, anybody doing a significant remodel. Um, or, you know, significant construction typically includes one of these in their projects, a, a majority of them that come in. Versus just doing like somebody coming in and doing a kitchen remodel, um, so I do think those numbers are going to increase, um, you know, over time.
Scott, aren't those number, I mean, that leaves it up to the discretion, of course, of the homeowner. Um, you know, the, it's, that doesn't necessarily help our, our, our affordable, affordable housing issue.
I was getting to that point, I was getting to that point, I was just kind of, I was kind of setting the landscape, sorry, maybe I was a little long, I apologize. Um, so, so, yeah, I mean, I think. I think that one of the areas we probably could, you know, get into if we could find a source of, of funding is even just. Doing something that incentivizes um folks to rent their units out, period. Right, because a lot of the units that, that are getting built in, in town are maybe housing, you know, other family members that are aging in place, that type of thing. And, and, and some of them are just being used as guest quarters for folks that come and stay with people. Um, so it'd be nice, you know, if we could do something, come up with a program that incentivizes them to just rent them out, period. And then even better, you know, if we could incentivize them to rent them out that are, that are rates that are, you know, that are affordable. And when you're looking at rates that are affordable, you heard um Lyric mention that sort of thirty percent of your income rate, you're not supposed to be spending more than that on, on housing. Um, so you're probably looking at, you know, numbers related to that sort of income level, you know, on a county-wide basis. Um, so area median, area median income on, o- otherwise than thirty percent of that, so.
So let me ask the question, oh, go ahead, Susan.
I really, I think that the powers that be need to look at that thirty percent number, it's absurd. As somebody who's been a renter for most um of her adult life. Um, I have always paid more rent than that and I've always paid all of my bills and never owed any money. So I, I, I just, I think that is not a realistic number, it's, it's, I don't know what they're looking at. But if we were to exclude people because gee, your income doesn't show, you know, that the rent part would be thirty percent. We would knock an awful lot of people out of this, so hopefully, whatever we can't come up with would not base itself on that. I, I just don't think it's realistic.
It could simply, you know, be related to the, the income levels that we have for, you know, for moderate income, for low income, very low income. Yeah, based on things like that and you could have a commensurate amount of funding assistance that goes along with that, right? And you, you could lock it in, it, Lyric is, is not, was not wrong, one of the issues, if you're looking at. We're giving you the funding and we're deed restricting these properties, one of the issues does come up when you sell them. Um, so, you know, that's, that's a hurdle, um, for sure, and I've heard. You know, that issue crop up, you know, more than once for, with folks that do what I do, um, you know, folks in my network have. Complained about that some, that have been doing this type of ADU thing and incentivizing them for a while, so.
Well, and, and, and Scott, that's a long time issue with any kind of affordable housing, that's a for-sale product. If you sell it, you know, you create value, which is great for low-income communities, but how do you manage that? How do you transfer that wealth or, right?
You have to have the program set up, so it spells all that out for sure.
And difficult, yes, so let me, let me get a little more specific, let's say. Um, the reason I think this idea is pretty powerful for Morro Bay is I think we could get an awful lot of units distributed throughout the city. Um, with an ADU affordable product. And maybe many more units than we could get with large-scale affordable projects. Um, we have a few sites, but limited sites in Morro Bay for affordable housing. Um, this could really expand that and could really up the number. I'm wondering, how do we get to a target of the kind of affordable units we need in the city, say, per year? That would really help us reverse gentrification. How do we even begin to get that target? Because until we have the target, this becomes, I think, a little amorphous, right? It doesn't become kind of sharp or focused. How do we, as a city, how do we even get to uh approximations of those numbers?
I mean, I, you know, you, you, you start with, you know, we have the numbers of affordable units that we're supposed to provide and that's in Reno. Um, and that's the place to start, but I would say to some extent, that's also a bit arbitrary. The number, um, you know, and, and so, uh.
Do you have that number off the top of your head?
I don't have it on the top of my head, I'd have to bring up the housing element thing, I, I've drawn a blank right now, I was trying to think.
Could we agendize one more conversation around this at the next commission meeting? Where we get real specific to Morro Bay, the kind of numbers we're looking at. I know the numbers are arbitrary, the housing element oftentimes is. Right, because you put a lot of wishes in there and rarely does it ever happen at, you know, at capacities. But I guess I'm thinking without some targets, if we could give real targets to the council, we could begin to show how. Maybe a small amount of money could actually begin to get us to that point. Um, some of the stuff Lyric talked about is pretty cool, guarantee, guaranteeing traditional loans. You know, um, that might not take a lot of money, I mean, that's really, that's maybe real leverage. So I, I'd love to, if we could, you know, come up with some numbers, maybe invite Lyric back to test some. You know, actual pathways for us, so we don't leave this in the ether. I think we need to kind of say, i- is this a, can this be a tool for Morro Bay?
You, you know, Bill, one of the um, things that I found really interesting too, and I think could be helpful. And I don't know how we get there and how we fund it, but the idea of folks who would help. Um, find and vet the renters for these properties, because I think. For many homeowners, that part would be overwhelming, the idea of having a stranger living on your property so close. You know, really adjacent to your home, your family and, and who manages that and how they find those people and if there are disputes, so I think.
Yes, Susan, so that was the question I asked Lyric, right? Who does manage this?
Yeah.
In a small city like Morro Bay, you need that help. And if it's going to be effective and really affordable, it's going to have to go through that kind of voucher process or something. And which, you know, what her response was, there's going to be a lot of applicants and then we restrict it to people that just live in Morro Bay.
Or work here.
Or work.
Yeah, who want to live here because they work here, yeah.
Right, and, and those are, that's really where the need is, I think, right, the gentrification, the workers. So if we start to look at that, um, there are organizations that do this, that do this vetting. And they would step in and do it for the homeowner and for the city, and so that would have to become part of the project, part of the strategy.
I also know that, um, you know, the slow, I think it's slow counties. Even their voucher program and housing assistance programs. You're part of, when you're, when you have a housing voucher here, you're part of a larger infrastructure. You have a case manager, you have people in the county that you work with, it's not, they're not just randomly thrown out to find housing. There's a system in place already for um people receiving public assistance for housing. This obviously would probably, you know, there's such a long list, likely.
Yeah, and again, I'd offer, you know, Asia, that's exactly right, that we're not, I mean, ADUs are affordable, even though your point is. Housing costs, construction costs have doubled in just the last year and. It might recede a little bit because it's about scarcity, but it's still going to stay higher. So yes, the ADUs are cost-effective, but they're still not affordable. So there needs to be a program and a management to, to, if we want to really claim, you know, to help our workers. To help our, you know, existing residents stay in Morro Bay, we need something like this.
Yeah, and, and Susan, I just thought I'd say that, uh, I think Bill was making a proposal to continue this item for further discussion. To kind of hash out some of these great things that were brought to us and now we're thinking about for Morro Bay. And how could we, you know, kick this off or kick this up to our council and boost. Boost our existing ADU goals and make them better by thinking out how Morro Bay can use some of the. Information we got tonight, how we can make it more specific to Morro Bay, what are the financial programs, what are the assistance programs we can get? Uh, but that's going to take more thought, we're not going to get all that done tonight. So I see where Bill's going side with support that in order for us to give what we got today was, which was great information, give it to our council. For further consideration or whatever, we could do it in a memo or whatever, but that's our job. As planning commissioners, we should be working on that housing element anyway, and we're just trying to increase the affordability of being in Morro Bay. I think that's about right, Bill.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, and we all, I think we all agree, this is one of the most critical issues in our city. Seeing people forced out is just awful, having workers have to drive, you know, thirty miles is not good. Uh, we can do better and this is a real option, I think.
Okay, great.
I have a, I have a thought.
Sure, Joe.
Uh, I suspect that there are a fair number of, of longer-term homeowners in, in Morro Bay. Who, who are probably uh equity-rich but disposable income poor. And, you know, those are, are the people. Uh, who, if, if we could persuade a large financial institution to, uh, a- as the article mentioned. Uh, the, the prospective income to, to qualify the lender based on the prospective income once the property is rented. And some sort of a, of a deferral until the thing gets constructed. And if you couple that with what Bill was mentioning, some sort of uh process that would vet the prospective renters for them. Uh, you know, I, I think you'd get a lot of people that would be, uh, would find it really persuasive. And I, I, you know, given, given the rate of appreciation of housing here in Morro Bay. And, and the demand for appreciation, I, I don't think it would be that difficult to persuade a, you know, lending institution. To get a little more flexible and actually give some weight to that respect. Now, it probably isn't exactly what we would call, i- it 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 might not turn out to be uh what we call affordable. But but maybe, um, you know, in in terms of uh of the deferred mortgage payments, maybe that would be an incentive where we could. Get these senior citizens to build and and a fair number of them actually opt to make it an affordable construction, an affordable unit. Just a thought.
Okay, so what I would suggest is, um, we consider this as as a future agenda item. Um, so when we get to that point in the agenda, we'll bring this up again and and perhaps add that as. An unfinished business um to look at again down the road, whether in two weeks, four weeks, you know, I. Imagine Scott has a pretty busy um. Couple of months ahead of him, but we'll work that out.
Yeah, Susan, can I ask Scott one more question? And this will go on his plate. Uh, I think during the presentation, uh, the presenter said that it takes about three hundred and thirty eight days. From start to finish to get this thing done. Yeah, that's in LA County. So I wanted Scott to put it in perspective for moral bay. So that's just a simple, what would it take in terms of time?
The permitting process, um, the thing that the things that, um, they looked at the entire process, right? Which, you know, doesn't have much to do with the city, um, has to do with their contractors and so forth. Um, so it was about the lower four months. Um, for the. And that means, and I took that to mean, you know, through whatever, you know, staff level permitting process down on the planning side of things. And building permit issuance, actually not a long time. Um. You know, it. Depending on whether they have a, I don't know what their process is on the on the planning side of things. Maybe they don't have that. They just go straight to building. I mean, some places. So, um, we don't have that. We don't have that luxury because we are, we, most of, most of our town is in the coastal zone of California. So.
Yeah.
Sounds like lightning speed to me for LA County. So.
And then, and the only reasons, uh, Scott, the only reason I ask that is obviously if we're gonna, you know, massage this further, think about it, we want. This is critical information, right? That if I'm going to consider this, I'm going to say, what is it going to take for me to do this in moral bay? I'm one. Equity, I want to do this. I'm going to build an ADU. So city of moral bay, what is it going to take? In in terms of time too, right? This is just something that everybody wants to know. What is it going to take time wise?
So, you know, one of the quick things on on this mic is that.
Yeah.
One, y- you know, when you go to do ADUs, a lot of banks are not even familiar with ADUs. So you need to get that in a familiarity. Two, you got a, an appraiser coming out. A lot of appraisers are not familiar with ADUs. So there becomes like, um, I think, uh, lyric suggested, you get kind of names of people who understand the product. That would include contractors, that would include architects. Asia talked about it with FEMA, holding the hand of somebody. The the point is that you're building a tiny project, not big, but it's got every complexity that a big project has. You, you've got to go through every step, the permit step, the utility issues, the the code issues, you know. The the costs, overruns, all these things are going to be a part of that project. So how we could put together a team and a concierge who maybe could help. That I mean, that really, I think Asia's big on it. I think it's a key, a key thing.
And I don't know if it's going to matter or not. This will go back to Scott again on his plate. He doesn't have to do anything now is that. In the Bay Area, they're building more tiny homes than they're building ADUs today. So tiny home versus ADU, doesn't matter what we call it, because every time I hear ADU, when I'm in the Bay Area, I think about a tiny home. They're building these like crazy in backyards, but they're calling them tiny homes and benefiting from that. By calling them homes, tiny homes. They're not ADUs. That's why I said at the last meeting, we call them tiny homes over here where I'm from. In the Bay Area, because they are actually building more tiny homes than they're building ADUs. But that's because they're taking advantage of that. Of the money or whatever's out there to do one or the other or both. Both are happening. Don't get me wrong. I'm just saying that. We've got a real crunch over here to build a lot of homes. So. I do live in moral bay, by the way. I just, I, but I spend a lot of time in the Bay Area, but it's crazy over here. And they are building a ton of tiny homes. And I heard that word come up at least twice today.
So, uh, Scott, I I think the difference is the ADU is a state initiated product. That has certain restrictions in cer- in terms of size, which changes. In basically zoning issues to allow them to happen. The tiny homes, I think, Mike, can be larger. And they're more, they're more specific to those, you know, they're they're adopted legislations in those districts, right? But the ADU is statewide.
Yeah.
That would be my. And is that 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 the Bay Area has policy specific to tiny homes, because we're actually, you know, one of the things that that our grant funding is paying for is looking at tiny home policies as well.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And that's why I wanted to put it on. Remember, I'm putting stuff on Scott's plate, not to answer. Because I want tiny homes to get thought out, you know, when we get it back, I want us to understand. Because Scott's working on it anyway. And at the end of the day, we're all trying to build more, more affordable homes. ADUs, tiny homes, whatever it takes, I'm going to go for it if it meets. Moral base standards and we can do it and we can, you know, finance it or whatever it's going to take. So. At the end of the day, I'm all for for everything, just as long as it fits our, the need and it meets the need. That's the other thing that meets the need of our community. So. And now Scott's working on that every day of the week anyway. And, you know, seven days a week, by the way. So. I have faith in Scott that the fact that you're going to work it all out for us and give us the answers next time we, we talk about it.
Work it out. It's all ADUs and tiny homes. You got it.
All right, um, let's close this item for now and move on to uh item D unfinished business. This was a review and adoption of a policy memo to establish design guidelines for public amenities along the waterfront. And this is you, Scott.
Okay, I have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you, assuming I can get it up here. It's uh, being a little fickle at the moment. Alright. You see the slide?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. I, it was acting oddly because I, instead of having it in the PowerPoint, uh, I have it in a PDF because the PowerPoint, something was wrong with it. Um, okay. Alright, so we're picking back up where we left off on the waterfront design memo. We, you know, sort of initiated this process back in September, was kind of in, um, related to, uh, you know, project improvements at Dutchmans. Um, we've had two meetings where we talked about specifics related to the memo. Um, first one was on October nineteenth, um, and then the last one was on December twenty first. Between the nineteen, the twenty first, we had a planning commissioner provide some feedback and I brought that back on the twenty first, what that feedback looked like. And then, um, took comments, um, from the planning commission at the December twenty first meeting. And then I've turned that into the draft memo. Um, so you have the draft memo, um, in the packet with you this evening. Um, idea would be to have the uh planning commission review the memo and, you know, provide comment and see if there's desired changes you'd like to see in it. Um, idea would be, um, with any luck, um, we can get those changes into it and bring it back to the next planning commission meeting where you would be able to. Um, adopt it. Um, part of your uh staff report, uh, package also includes a resolution that would allow you to adopt the memo. So I think, you know, first order of business would be to get, you know, input from the commission. Um, on the language in the memo and changes that you would like to see. And then the next piece of it's, um, goes into the design component of it. Um, went down on the waterfront, a little uh fuel trip with planning staff and kind of gave, um, took many pictures of. Um, all the existing improvements that are down on the waterfront, tables, chairs, benches, um, decking, uh, planters. Other decorative features that you see down there, um, interpretive exhibits. Um, trash receptacles, um, we have some on lighting. I don't know how many of those actually got into the. Into the presentation though. Um, and then I have those in the slides that are coming next. And I'll kind of go through them quickly and then we can circle back to them. The idea wouldn't necessarily to, to use what I put in those slides, but. Um, maybe there's things that you like and don't like in there and we could like cross those off or say, yes, that's one that we want. Um, at the end of this, I have also the slides from the previous, um. Uh, planning commission presentation on the subject. Um, I wasn't planning on presenting all of those to you, but I do have them if you. Uh, there are things that you remember from that, um, that you liked or didn't like. I can bring those up. Um, I also have a lot more pictures of things that are down on the waterfront than what's just shown here. I have. The ability to show you some more of what's down there. Um, I will say this, um, the one takeaway I had from. Taking on this exercise was that when you walk from lease site to lease site down the waterfront, the types of. Um, improvements that are down there, the tables, the chairs, the umbrellas, the planters, all of the things that are in the public spaces. Differ dramatically from one lease site to the next. Um, so that was kind of my takeaway in, 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 in undertaking this and in walking one end of the embarking arrow to the other and taking pictures of the things that are down there. Um, so I'll go briefly in each one of the slides and then we can sort of revisit, um, afterwards. These are not, increase the size a little bit. So here's, um, some examples of some tables that we that we saw down there. You see. One in the public space, uh, there on the right hand side has a setup on it, which you shouldn't have. You see some seating. Down in the bottom left, uh, which is actually kind of nice. And you see planters along there that have succulents in them that were doing really well. It was kind of a, a nice area. Um, down on the waterfront, um, some sort of, um, simple, um, tables that you see over at Giovanni's, which is kind of the one up on the left side there. Um, and then ones that are down by, uh, little huts, uh, you know, down there in the bottom right. Has a table, um, that also has umbrellas, an umbrella on it. We have some benches that you see different types of benches down there. We have, um, in the public spaces, we have some memorial benches, like you see kind of in the middle here. Um, we also had, you know, benches with sort of natural materials, rock. You see these ones that look like cleats on a ship that are made out of concrete. Um, saw one down here that had, uh, that was over by Giovanni's that, uh, was a bench. Along the right of way, along the sidewalk, that also had planter incorporated to the back. That was kind of interesting. Um, and then again, another, oops, other type of sort of, uh, memorial bench there, pretty sturdy, pretty simple, uh, you know, uh, four inch metal piping with. You know, like kind of two by six, um, boards on it. Um. We, there was, these were sort of ubiquitous along the waterfront in like the public sort of park type areas that were down there. There's some planters that we saw down there. Uh, the wood planter, fairly simple, looks nice though. Um, and this was at Geo's as well. Um, this is at Stax, uh, wine bar here in the middle. You see that that's metal, so it's like, uh, a rusted metal look like that, we thought was kind of nice. Again, you see sort of the half wine barrel ones there. You have about the top right, you see the more decorative ones that a lot of places had these. Um, kind of in and around the public spaces that were more decorative in nature. You see that at the top and the bottom here. Um, like input from the commission on, are you interested in those types of things or? Or really more into the concrete type ones. I have some of those, um, in the other slide presentation that I presented to you at the last meeting. Any number of trash can designs down there. Uh, we've decorated, we have ones that kind of have pictures on them, uh, mural type things on them. We have lots of concrete ones, um, and ones that have tops on it that makes it more difficult for the, uh, the seagulls and the birds to pull trash out of them. Um, there are other ones down there too that aren't on here that were a different type of concrete. So. It was probably in total about, uh, nine different types of trash cans that we have in the public spaces down there. Umbrellas and I'm still working on, um, coming up with the design, uh, for the harbor walk, bring back to you. It would be something along the ones, the top where there's a logo on them or something along those lines. Um, if we talked about this last time. And then just some pictures of some other areas down on the waterfront that have, um, umbrellas. Down there. And decorative features in a few different places, um, down along the waterfront where you see things like this. Um. And I was interested in what the, what the commission thought about that. Do you like those types of things incorporated into, um, the lease sites or the common areas of lease sites? Or not? Uh, be good to get input from you on that. Um, I don't know, there's a whole lot needed to say about the interpretive exhibits, but, um, you have the ones that are on the stands. Then you have the one at the coast guard, which is mounted on the wall. I think that was something that Commissioner Gr- Grafia spoke about last time. Um, the ones down here at the bottom came in kind of fuzzy. Um, these are different types. There's a, you know. And there's kind of a plaque on a rock. We have, um, that down by Coleman Park. Um, and then another one of the interpretive signs next to it. Um, the benches in that middle one are kind of interesting. They're not super solid. But they do have a nice concave, you know, sort of form to them, which I, I, which I liked, um, but would like it more if they were a little more, um, substantial. Here's some, you know, deck and railing materials, um, surface materials, you brick and you have the. You know, the different types of grading that we have out there over the water. Those are typically what you find when there's eelgrass presence. Um, like some input on the types of railings. I would imagine the idea would be more that we're matching what's adjacent to the lease sites as they come forward. Um, but if there's a preferred style or or theme that you like, I'd like to hear about it. You also see on here is a couple of different bike rack options. You have. Um, sort of simple, pretty simplistic ones here with the metal, the blue, uh, one right here, one that we have at the downtown. Then you have the sort of whimsical one that's the fish. We have an example of that that's down by, um, Centennial Stair. It's green. Um, some somewhat similar to that. Like input from the commission on, you know, what you expect as it relates to bike racks. You'd rather have the more traditional, um, designs or is whimsical good? Um, be good input to get. Um, lighting and a- again, uh, didn't go down there at night to take pictures of the different types of lighting. We have similar lighting to these things down there. Um, I was curious to see whether you wanted me to give specific examples of lights that you wanted to see, or do you want to just really relate it more to the color spectrum? The heat spectrum for lighting and look at that sort of three thousand to four thousand Kelvin range. Um, was interested in commentary on that. That was kind of, um. It, so I want the planning commission, the, the, the evening to kind of, we can go through the slides much more slowly and you can speak to each one as we go through them if you'd like. Um, and talk about the things that you like and don't like. Um, and then, um, if we come to some consensus, then I can bring that back as the, uh, attachment. To the, the memo as the menu of things that, that. That folks can choose from when doing redevelopment along the waterfront. I'll stop sharing. And the, the first item that I wanted the, the commission to, you know, really speak to was the. Um, was the memo itself and the language on it and, uh, what changes, um, if any, that you wanted. I will say this, uh, before we start on that, I did note that. One of the, where do we go? One of the, um. Pieces of the memo itself. The, gosh, we can't, having computer issues today. The memo itself doesn't, does suggest that it has. An exhibit to it. It does not have the PC resolution as an exhibit to it. So it really would just be the design menu would be exhibit A. Um, exhibit B would be removed, um, because the resolution comes before it and that resolution is what you'll use to adopt a lot, to adopt the actual memo. So. If you want to have discussion, comments, questions on the, on the memo, that'd be great.
So Scott, I actually overall, um, really like the way this memo is formulated. And one of the things. That I appreciated were, was wording, for example, um. Menu of furniture and planters for selection and inclusion in all harbor walk adjacent projects submittals, including a menu of existing furniture and planter choices that are favored. So favored as opposed to mandated. I I appreciated that allowed some flexibility, um. You know, say not everybody's doing fish and chips. So some Italian restaurant comes along and says, well, I need a little more of this flavor to my stuff. Um, same thing on the, the second page, the menu is meant to be a guide. Um, and yet, as you were giving your presentation, you were saying, as you walked along, there were some dramatic differences. From lease site to lease site. Did you find that especially jarring or? You know, was that uncomfortable to you? Do you feel like we need more consistency?
I, I think, I, I like the idea of, you know, providing some guidelines. I like the idea of having more consistency. And I think maybe one of the things that we add in here, um, add into this, or maybe that we add into the conditions of approval for projects moving forward. And it really kind of struck me as I kind of finished the walk. And and realized that a lot of the, um, public amenities that, uh, you know, the. and and realized that a lot of the public amenities that, you know, the tables and chairs and benches and things that are out in the public areas. In some, on some lease sites, they were well maintained and looked perfect. On others, they were not well maintained and they looked less than perfect. And I think, you know, I think moving forward, it would be good, maybe it doesn't need to live in the memo, but it definitely should be something that we're paying attention to as it relates to the permitting and requiring that those items be maintained, you know, in good order and that that that, you know, potentially we get into, you know, replacement when they're worn out because there were several that just didn't look very good. Rusted tables and chairs and those types of things. And I thought it's not it's not an inviting scenario. And in some instances, like I questioned the safety of them. You know, if they're, if they get really rusty. So yeah, that was kind of the thing that struck me the most is doing the walk. Yes, there is a wide variance of things that are down there. And maybe we can through this process, help narrow that a little bit. But the idea that they need to maintain those things, that we need to regularly walk the waterfront and and pay attention to those things became pretty evident.
I could see consistency in especially public spaces.
Yeah.
So some kind of consistent seating. The benches, actually, I think trash can consistency, even if they're all art cans, you know, or something would be a nice way to go. And definitely suggesting that we're not requiring that things need to be maintained and updated periodically. I see Mr. Roshan's hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Nice photos. I think it's a really good exercise, walking the walk and like focusing on the items that you did. I'm going to make a suggestion and see what everybody thinks. I like the wording in the menu, the memo. I'm happy with it. Personally, I'm ready to move the memo tonight. What I'd like to suggest is the menus are a little more difficult. And you raised one of the key issues, which is something that maybe looks okay, but is it easy to maintain? And so if we're going to make, let's call it favorites, recommendations. I'd like to make that a little more of a specific process. And I'm wondering if maybe we actually do a walk, commissioner walk, sort of like the real thing that you did, kind of see it and make it a separate exercise to kind of come up with menu recommendations of existing stuff. So if, and to do that's going to take a little more time. So what I'd love to do is get the memo out and then actually take more time with the menus. And I think the other thing we need to look at the menus is maybe have a couple of more new pieces of furniture available, not just the existing. And so then we could kind of compare that, look at a little bit at the costs going in. And I think that would make more informed decisions. So I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I guess I'm proposing do the memo today and set up a walk for the menu in the future.
And Susan, I would second that. I'd just like to comment that I did read the policy memos, Scott, and I thought it was excellent, by the way. So I agree with Bill. And I also agree with Susan that when it comes to public versus private, you know, the leaseholder, there should be some flexibility. You know, because if you're Dutchman's, you want it this way. If you're an Italian restaurant, you want it that way. If you're a, you know, whatever, but you know what I'm talking about. But I did say at one of the meetings as well, like what Scott did. Every time I come to Morro Bay, I walk it again. I walk down to the Embarcadero from one end to another, and I always notice that difference that Scott caught. I always noticed that. I think you guys remember me saying that. Depending on where you're at, I mean, things change a lot. But there is a lot of diversity, but maybe we can do that as we go along, right? This is nothing's going to change overnight. So as we do projects, as people come forward to want to, you know, add things and change things, then we will look at that on a continual basis. But I like Bill's recommendation that we approve the policy tonight. So I would second that and then, you know, do maybe that walk as a group or whatever, and then maybe come back together and talk about that part of it. So I do like that idea.
Asia, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. And you guys will have to forgive me if this was discussed in a prior meeting that I wasn't a part of, but the only thing that really stands up for me that maybe you could point where in the memo it might address this. I just did the walk last weekend as well with my family and the way, I don't know if this policy memo is able to address wayfinding or if that's just a part of general design, general plan, design guidelines. Because if you go back to on the, if you look at the slide that Scott put up with the bicycle racks, you can see the sign for the harbor walk. And it, the, my main concern with the with walking the whole front was those signs were really insufficient for pointing out that there was a harbor walk. Or it felt, I felt like I was I was seeing them after the fact, instead of having them be a wayfinding thing or identifier. And I know here in the memo, it says under currently it says exhibit B, number two, identity signage. And so I'm not, I'm wondering if that falls under if that kind of wayfinding for the Harbor Rock falls under that or if that's been addressed.
Commissioner King, that's a good observation. And so those blue and white signs that you see down there, they talk about harbor walk and talk about public access and and those types of things are requirements of the coastal commission in relation to issuance of the coastal development permit along the waterfront, because we don't issue that. We issue conditional use permits on the waterfront. They issue the coastal development permit because everything on the water side of the Embarcadero, save a little area where Geo's is, is in their original jurisdiction. Now, to go to your wayfinding point, we do have wayfinding signage coming for the city. We, one of the would have went out to bid, then we got the bids back and supply chain issues specifically related polls for the signage came up. And so we've been waiting for those materials to come in before we start deploying the wayfinding signage. We have wayfinding signage both at the vehicle level. So larger sites like you see in the city of San Luis as an example. Those brown signs that they have. And then we also have them at the pedestrian level, also like the city of San Luis, meaning alongside walks and stuff that you see here. And then you point to things like the harbor walk and and other things, you know, down along the waterfront. So that is, that is coming, I'll say.
Yeah, because I guess while I was walking, I was wishing that there was a yellow brick road painted, you know, to follow. So.
Also something discussed in the city's general plan as it relates to the harbor walk, something along those lines to specifically identify it as well. So.
Susan, I have a question for Scott.
Sure.
Scott, you know, after this inventory of lights and chairs and umbrellas is put together. Will the actual approval of whatever the applicant wants? Will that still come before the the planning commission or is it, it will? Okay.
So, so the whole point behind this is to provide guidance, right? And and really, I'll call it a tool, right? It's a tool for 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 staff to give, you know, direction to applicants when they come in related to the, you know, design amenities that they're going to have on the site. It's also a tool for the planning commission to review projects in relation in relation to as well. So it's a tool for both staff and for the planning commission and for those folks that are coming in because it provides them a little more direction, which I think is valuable. And it's a good place to start. And I think, you know, at some point this gets memorialized in, you know, when we do the update of the waterfront master plan. But that effort's going to cost us $230,000 plus not the money to do that right now. So this is, you know, an interim step and one that can be, you know, a living step, right? As we put the memo together and have the menus, the menus can change. You know, you know, as we sort of experience them, I think. So.
So I would like to ask, Joe, did you have?
Well, I was just, I was just going to further state something obvious because I'm very glad to hear that. Because, you know, God's always in the details and, you know, I was, you know, my attention was called to some of those large wooden seats. The tables and surround our benches and, and, you know, isolated, they look fine in in certain places on the Embarcadero, they're perfectly fine. But I can imagine other scenarios where there are too many of them or they're in the wrong place. You know, particularly with respect to to large table settings, because what typically happens is two people sit down at a table meant to have a capacity for eight. And suddenly you have these large tables occupying the space, but there's only six people there. Whereas if you have smaller tables that can accommodate more. So if you still need to look at each situation and each applicant as to, and I think that's or I think it's true for planters, it's true for bike racks, it's true for a whole host of them.
So what I was going to ask, Joe, and thank you, and Asia as well. I, how you feel about putting off the whole menu idea or whether you think because I almost feel like we could go through this. I think it maybe is not important to be specific since as Joe says, each site is going to have different requirements and different elements. And pricing things out is going to quickly become obsolete because, you know, all of that is changing, materials change. But perhaps we could talk, for example, in tables and chairs about do, do we want a certain you know, do we want to look of lightness or heaviness? Do we want you know, things that are stable and secured to the ground? You know, I think we talked in a previous meeting about not really liking the heavy concrete benches that a more sort of comfortable and a lighter area look would be better, that we didn't want planters obscuring walkways, that sort of thing. I mean, I wonder if it's worth, since we're here now, taking a run through this menu and see how we do with it. Rather than putting it off again for another, you know, several weeks or months down the road. So just putting it out there.
Can I chime in, Susan?
Sure, absolutely.
You know, first I like Bill's idea about moving the policy memo forward. So then we're to the menus. You and Joe talked about that, you know, a menu is just what it is. It's a lot of stuff. When you go into a restaurant, it's four pages, six pages, eight pages, whatever you want. You know, the more pages, the better for me because that means I have more choices. So what I'm saying is that this, nothing's set in stone, even the policy memo, it's just a directive for the applicant, for the PC, for staff to to help them when it comes to dealing with projects. Now, when it comes to the menu, I don't have a problem as you suggested. But I don't think we have to get drilled down to that level. I think we could just simply, even what Scott gave us tonight, I wouldn't mind just moving that forward, but that would only be again. It's just some, it's it's help for the applicant, it's help for the planning commissioner, it's help for staff in trying to figure out, but we could do a two-page menu, a four-page menu and six-page menu and eight-page menu. All I'm trying to get to is the fact that I like what we have. We've already started with one major project that had a lot of years here, 20 and 30 years combined. And we did a good job. So I don't have a problem with the menu because I think we will be looking, as Joe said, we will be looking at these things over and over as the applicants come forward anyway. So I don't want to spend, you know, I don't, I don't even think it's necessary to spend the kind of time that we need to do to get a perfect menu because there's never going to be a perfect menu.
Right, but Scott.
That's just my point.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But I would support you in moving it.
Scott asked a few specific questions, for example, in the decorative features. Do we like them or not? I mean, that's a pretty easy one to look at. A lot of these had a nautical design to them. And they're simple. You know, in my mind, that would be a yes. And again, I think most applicants coming forward are going to do something that is consistent to what their project is, what whatever their restaurant or so on. He also asked how we felt about traditional versus whimsical bike racks. If anybody has any particular feelings about that. Railings. He suggested matching to the adjacent properties, but is there any preferred theme in that? And then in the lighting, did we want to look at specific types of lighting or more stick to the spectrum of warmth and coolness? So perhaps we could even address those things to be kind of a help to staff.
And one of the things, Susan, that I guess the one that got me the most was when Scott went down and he took nine pictures of nine different types of garbage cans.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, you know what, I could live with all of them, but they will, you know, one day we will get them to the point where it looks better all around. You know, so when he gave me those nine, I said, you know, I looked at him, I said, you know what? Okay, okay, okay. But it depends on where it's at. What's near it? Is it a public space? It is a private? Does the owner want something different? All I'm saying is that that's the one that really set me off in saying, do we really want to narrow the garbage cans down to three or four?
Well.
And the bike racks down to two or three? And I don't know if I'm ready for that tonight. I don't know if I'm like, I don't know if I'm ready for that tonight. I'd like to look a little bit harder.
Okay, Bill?
I guess.
Let's start with Bill and then Joe.
So I'm, I'm going to kind of echo, I think, what Mike said. I think a planning commission's job is not to state our opinion. It's to find a basis for our recommendations. It's not what I think or what Susan thinks that should make a difference. It's the way we can make a recommendation that has the benefit of the walk and the community. That, to me, is not shooting from the hip at nine pictures. That's, that's me. And I've never done something like that at commission where we've sat around and opined, shooting from the hip. I think we need to find a way to get some direction that doesn't just recommend, yeah, we like that can. But this can is good because and or as we do the walk, maybe we do a subcommittee to do the walk. I don't know. We'll realize maybe there are zones along the harbor walk where these recommendations could be more solidified. But for me, the idea of just opining with opinion is not a substantial way to respond to the menu. I think the menu has to be more considered. That's, I guess, why I'm suggesting separating the two, because the menu could be helpful. But it's got to be, it's got to have more foundation to recommend it than just what what we happen to think at the pictures, I do believe.
And Joe.
Oh, well, I was starting with the notion that this menu, it isn't, of course, all inclusive. It's just to give the the applicants some, some basis for, for what it should be rather than have certain, having to define divine rather what the taste of the community is. So, I mean, I can't disagree with Bill saying, sure. The more that we can kind, kind of say, we have six examples of chairs and tables. And and the more that we can add a narrative to it, which try to suggest what the community would like in chairs and tables beyond the six photographs. I mean, that just only adds to the help for the applicant to decide what he wants and what it's like to get approved. So.
I guess one of my challenges is that, you know, having been part of the community for so many years and part of the business community, especially and sat on so many different committees and boards and you know, there's a lot of this that we have addressed in many forms already and in larger community settings. And I think we could be wise enough to look at it in terms of practicality and utility as well as aesthetics. Trash cans, for example, we have the specific condition here on the coast of having bird issues. So, you know, the trash cans that are going to work are the ones that prevent birds to some level from pulling out the trash, which they do. But you'd also like something aesthetically pleasing, something that's not going to blow over, something that's, you know, going to be somewhat weatherproof. And and I'm okay if we want to, you know, continue to put this off and do more research. But I, I feel like I think it's, as, as Mike said, it's a menu of possibilities that. I I think it's, as as Mike said, it's a menu of possibilities that. Have a utilitarian and aesthetic aspect to them. And I I I don't, I mean, I'm comfortable either way. But I I do feel like we could make a little more progress on it tonight. And some of us have spent a lot of time walking up and down that waterfront and and using those spaces and. Participating in those shops and restaurants. And even sitting on those benches and chairs and so, but again. I'm I'm flexible too. And I see Mike and I see Bill with hands up.
Well, I I don't know if I have my hand up, but I think, let me lower my hand. Well, since I had, since I'm saying something, so Bill made that recommendation initially that we approved the policy memo, so. That was something I seconded, so I don't know if we can just take this in pieces at this point and approve the policy memo, because that motion was made, I seconded it. So can we, do you guys want to move everything together that we can pull our vote, maybe move everything, or? Do you, Bill, do you still want to move forward with approving the policy memo, Bill, alone?
I love the idea of doing it in pieces, but policy memo done.
Yeah, and I second that, and I second that, then. Yeah, I'll still second that, I still second, yeah.
And then to add on to that, like this, you know, Susan is probably maybe the, you know, very familiar with the harbor walk. I'm less so, so what would help me is to, and I can do it this week, is to walk it and kind of take Scott's list and look at it. You know, I think it's if we get a subcommittee, that could be really informative. To come back with some ideas like, well, this one is, you know, this can looks fantastic because it does have utility. It is easy to clean, it is in good shape, and it's one of the older ones. And without like X-ing other ones out, we can come up with more of a justification rather than just picking stuff. It would help me to walk it and say that, and so I'm willing to do it quickly and even put my thoughts in writing, or we can. You know, do it with Scott, could we do, we can't do the whole commission walking together, can we?
We can't, so I I have a couple of options here for you. The subcommittee idea was one that I kicked around earlier this this afternoon with Cindy. Because I thought we might end up someplace like we're at right now. Reading the tea leaves. Anyway, so I thought that might be one option. I I'm I'm fine if you guys want to do two-two ones, and I'm happy to walk the waterfront. You know, with you, and I can bring Cindy along, we can walk it with you guys. It's 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 interesting because Cindy's been the planner on most of the projects that are down there that are more recent, so she has a lot of knowledge, I mean. You know, why things are the way they were, why something looks the way that it does, she's. She's great with that part of it, and that's that's helpful. I mean, it helped me when I was down there walking it, you know, just like I don't remember why this was this way or or this. Because she's she's, you know, mired in it, I guess, you know, related to permitting.
I really liked that idea, Scott, because I think I think we would learn something from that. So, you know, we're not just offering a choice so much as we're we're getting informed about it. And it might also raise the importance of the harbor walk if we all have that same kind of energy and awareness that Susan has, so that would be good.
Bill, Bill, can I ask you a question, Bill? So would you be willing to serve on that subcommittee, Bill?
I'd love to, yeah.
Yeah, because the, you know, I I jump right in, but it's always nice to get the other, you know, the vision of the other commissioner, like. Like a woman's vision, like maybe Asia, I know Susan's done enough, we only have one other woman planning commissioner, that's Asia. I know Joe's done enough walking, so I was wondering if Asia would want to be part of that subcommittee with you. To meet with Cindy, and then I'll continue to walk it on my own, and now I'll see what you guys give me back, but I'll give you my my input.
Mike, could I interrupt? One of the thoughts that Scott had was that we could all walk it with staff, so we just can't. All five of us walk it together, two people, you know, at a time, so I think we should all do this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy doing that, we have to do this subcommittee thing. I'm also happy to provide you all of the pictures that we took. I can give you access to them, whether you want to look at them or not, it's up to you. I can give you access to the previous PowerPoints that had the other. Materials on it that weren't from the waterfront necessarily, but were examples of things. If that's helpful, if it's not and you don't want it, that's fine, I just I have it and I can I can make it available to you if you want it, so.
Send it along, I think, you know, you can't have too much information.
I do have the the pictures are kind of categorized these somewhat, so they're they're, you know, the trash cans and tables and chairs are here and one folder and that type of thing, so. I can definitely do that, so.
So I would suggest we go back to. The policy memo, and I think we all felt comfortable with going ahead and approving that. And do you want to make a formal motion on that, Bill? Thank you. Ready, so why don't we just go ahead and and move it?
I say we move it and and maybe we should have a vote and. As written, and and I thank Scott and Cindy for the memo.
And I seconded that, and you know, I just noticed though that, like I said, it's only a policy memo, so it's not. It, you know, it's it's something we will use moving forward, but that doesn't mean it won't won't change. When it needs to change, but you know, it's just something we use as a tool, as a tool. So that's why I'd like to make that comment as a second to the motion.
And really, the way the resolution is written. The menu, not specifically in there, so I think we're fine.
So, yeah, we would be, we would be adopting that resolution, which adopts the policy or approves the policy, and then coming back with the menu, so.
Okay, so any other discussion on this motion?
And who do I have the second from? Is that was that? Rodriguez, okay, thank you, okay. All right, so, ready to call it?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Gracia.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner King.
Sure, yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Roshan.
Yes.
Chairperson Stewart.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, thank you.
So, Scott. Go ahead and I think forward all of us, all your pictures and background information, and then perhaps you can talk. With Cindy about setting up the times for us.
Do you have anything, I mean, I guess if you. I I can certainly give you our times when we're available. Yeah, we can do that, I'll I'll get with Cindy tomorrow and we'll send those out to you. Wanting to try to do it, what, early next week?
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay, all right, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to. I guess say or ask about. You know, I read through, I'm sorry, when I read through this. I feel like there is guidance, the way that it's worded provides guidance. To how we would make judgments in the future, and so I just want to clarify that. As a planning commission, am I hearing that it's not necessarily our jobs to select like individual furniture design? But. In reality, it would be our job to approve someone else's selection of furniture design. Into when projects come before the planning commission. And so I guess I'm just saying, I'm just need some clarity on what. What was brought up in the discussion?
I think the idea behind the the menu, Commissioner King, is is really. To provide some direction to applicants that are coming in with projects and are designing their projects. As it relates to the sort of public amenities, the 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 furniture, the planners and those types of things. You know, so it's, again, it's a guide, they can look in there, these types of things that we're interested in, if you have something that's way outside the realm. Then you might have an issue, so we would be talking to you about it, and it helps us, like, these are the things we expect to see. Kind of the, we're setting the lines up on either side, kind of play between the lines, I guess. Is what we generally would expect a an application to reflect. And we, on the staff side of this, would be talking with the applicants upfront about that. And we'd be pointing today, you got you're getting ready to design your project on the waterfront, make sure you look at our waterfront design guideline memo.
So I guess, I guess that, like, having pictures of what already exists. Might not fit into how, you know, number one and number two describe what. The memo. Sets of some guidelines for. Future projects, right?
Yeah, well, and it doesn't, in some of the things that I provided the commission, you know, I I referenced, you know, previous PowerPoint slides, and I did that on purpose because. This, this time I told you I was going to go down and walk the waterfront and take pictures of the things that are down there. So it sort of informs the discussion, because a lot of the things that I gave you pictures of previously were things that are kind of like things that are down on the waterfront, right? They're not things for more obey. My my take from that was the commission struggled a little bit with that. And I said, well, okay, if you take those and you compare them to the things that are down on the waterfront, it kind of gives you some perspective about, okay, this is sort of the realm in which we can work. And an example of this is we have residential design guidelines. That are adopted, and that's, your your house doesn't need to look like what those things are, but when you're designing them, they should take, you know, those concepts that are shown in picture format in there. To heart when you're looking at things, and we point to those on a regular basis when designs come in that don't do that. So this is kind of the same thing.
Right.
If if I could weigh in, you know, Asia, this memo came about from a project. And we looked at the Dutchman project, and a number of important things came out of that project. And they were things that this commission gave priority to. One of the most important one was the idea of historic preservation along the waterfront. And the idea of, you know, iconic, you know, artifacts. And that was something that, you know, the commission, the planning commission hadn't focused on before with the waterfront. And so what the memo was hoping to do, I think, was to sort of say, this is what we discovered through that project. These are good things, this is the current commission sort of saying, can we focus on these emphases? We went to staff, staff kind of saw where we were going with it and felt good about it, I think. And so this is going to be helpful to staff to have it in writing, and it's going to be helpful to the next applicant who comes in. I'm not sure it's the commission's job to pick furniture, that's my, that's my point. I think we can make encouragements and we can identify what works and what doesn't because of. But for us to pick furniture, I've never been involved in a situation like that. In all my years of on the commission where we've done that, and I would like to avoid that. Now, we can look at what's there and say, well, we don't like that because I think that's helpful. But just to sort of pick and choose, I'm a little, I'm reluctant to go there. But the memo is really important because it's, we learn from every project we do, and then we need to institutionalize that learning.
So I get that, I guess I just don't fully understand, like, by going down and seeing. You know, again, going with staff and seeing what's already there. Although I love, would love to do that, and I know that's important to inform this memo, but. Yeah, I guess I'm just, I guess we can then make recommendations for informing whatever example menu is put forward.
I'll offer real quick, the thing that I think would be great is to have our collective minds look at the walk and be really aware of it, the way Susan is. And then the next project that comes along, and there will be projects coming along soon, along the harbor walk. We'll have a kind of a, not a one project view, we'll have a kind of a collective understanding of what the walk is. And for me, the exercise of of saying, yes, this is, you know, this is good because that's a, that's a good exercise for us to do. I think it sharpens our awareness, so that's, I guess that's what I think the benefit would be.
Absolutely, and I, so I just want to clarify, the next step is to. Okay, a menu or to add recommendations to the menu or to take things away from the menu?
I think that's what we'll decide, you know, I don't know. You know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, this is not, this is not an. An elaborate study of of furniture and lighting, so it's it's a little bit, you know, ad hoc. But I think it can be an advantage to staff to have that that consideration.
I think it's kind of a palate check, really, you know, I mean, I I think, I I think you'll be, I think you'll all be able to walk down along the waterfront. And see things that you think are not quite right. You know, I think that in and of itself, if we just did that and and have something that comes out of that, I think that would be very valuable. Because, you know, there'll be at least a little bit of consensus there about the things that we expect when new projects come forward, that's that's the win, right? That's the win for the planning commission, for staff, and for the applicants, because we can give them solid direction, I think, so.
Susan, one one last, one last question. This is actually for Bill. You know, increasingly, I'm of the opinion, say, like the tables, the norm should be that the tables should be secured. To the to the ground, where the the umbrellas might have. A harbor walk logo or no logo, but certainly we don't want. The logo of any commercial establishment on the umbrellas. This, do those limitations go in the memorandum or are they somehow incorporated into the menu of items?
My sense is, Joe, we would do it in the menu. The memorandum was really a quick response to what we learned at the Dutchman effort. And it's trying to institutionalize the decisions we made at that point. Going deeper is really a good thing, because the harbor walk is really important, and I think the commission can bring that kind of focus. And how it comes out, you know, I don't know, but I think what you're saying is really important, there, you know. To look at this stuff knowing it's fixed is different than just looking at it. You know, because a table is different if it's fixed to the ground, that makes it really different. And so we need to, like, maybe we could come up with some understandings, you know, talking this through with 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 Scott and Cindy. Okay, if we're gonna do this, then we need this kind of furniture. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fair, and I'm fine with that, yeah, as long as we, as long as we talk about it at some time, yeah.
And Joe, there are a few things, for example, like the umbrellas. I, you you really wouldn't be allowed to put other kinds of signage on the umbrella, is that correct, Scott? For example, you can't have Coca-Cola signs on the umbrella, that, or or even, I think, the name of the restaurant.
Anything that's going to be public wouldn't have anything like that on it. We just talked about potentially coming up with like a logo for the public space umbrellas. So you have that continuity that tells you that it's the harbor walk, that it's, these are public furnishings, I think that's one of the biggest. You all, you you all expressed it, concern related to like these spaces that are supposed to be public, but they look an awful lot like the dining area. As an example, so doing things that 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 reduce that, it's good thing. Public spaces should look public.
And I realized we went through this whole thing and never opened it up for public comment, Scott, am I fired?
Yeah, I I I realized that too after we took the vote.
Was sort of hoping that Highland would give me a heads up. Highland, have we had anybody waiting with their hand up? He's gone to sleep.
Yeah, I think we still could take public comment, though, but we're not.
So Highland, is there any public comments?
Thank you, Chair, we have no raised hands in the queue.
I am so sorry, we got so excited about this, I just went ahead, okay. Moving on, future agenda items, so one of the things was, we wanted to bring. Back some more information on the ADUs. That correct, and then we will be gathering to. Take our separate looks at the waterfront and the design elements and the menu. Any other, were we going to go back over parts of the code that we? Didn't we talk about going into more depth?
On zoning.
Zoning, yeah. Zoning code.
Yeah, we'll probably be bringing zoning back with part of the the the. Thing that we were tasked with, it was not only presenting this to the planning commission. But we were getting information back from our Chamber of Commerce, specifically the Government Affairs Committee. We have that now, I was able to sit down, Chamber CEO, and go over those. Eric Crawford, and we're putting together responses to that. And. All right, we're looking to bring it back, hopefully in the second meeting in February. If not, it'll be the first meeting in March. But that's the, that's the, that's the timeframe we're shooting for, and those will be adoption hearings for planning commission, and I'm anticipating to. Or at least scheduling to for you, they're probably, they would probably follow one another depending on the amount of input that we get. And then and then your recommendation would be on to the city council from that, from that point.
Okay, thanks, Asia, anything else? All right, moving on to Community Development Director comments, anything else we have on the agenda for next time?
No, I, I don't know what we have coming up. I know Cindy and Nancy were talking about that, and I don't know what the decision was. Didn't get the final version of that, so.
Trying to see if there are any projects that look like they were imminent, but.
We, we have a couple of ones that we were missing some pieces to, and so they were running those down, and I, I didn't, wasn't able to speak with Cindy about it before she left today, so.
Okay. Wow, Joe?
That, that, that plan for the, for the park.
Coleman?
Coleman Park, yeah. Will, will that come before us, or, or what, what is, we have any input into that, or what?
It's, the, the entirety of the park is in the original jurisdiction of the coastal commission. So I, I think, you know, much of that permitting is going to go through that process. As it stands right now. I know we're not done with it, we, we keep, I keep talking about menus. You know, much of that plan was a menu to obtain grant funding, so we're not done with that process yet, right? This was really just to submit an application for the grant, to get the money to do the work, and then the plan would come back out of that, out of that process. So, so I guess at some point or other you would see it, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, I want to thank Bill once again for bringing forward the inclusive action for the city group from LA, that was really, really helpful, really fabulous. And if there is nothing more, we will adjourn the meeting. Our next meeting, if we have an agenda, will be February first at six o'clock via teleconference still. Everybody stay healthy and safe, and hopefully we see y'all in two weeks, or actually a few of you within the week if we do our walks together. All right, thanks, everybody, have a good night.
Everybody.
You too, bye.